Excellent. Thank you very much, Rob. So I'll call the meeting to order. Is there any declaration of interest, pecuniary or otherwise? Seeing none, once again, I would say if one comes up during the course of the meeting, I would ask you to declare it at that time. Council, looking at the list that for, is there anything that needs a separate discussion, councillor, so ever?
Yes, Mr. Warden, I'd like to pull items A and D, please.
Help if I turn on the microphone. So I need a mover and securer that we approve everything but A and D. Moved by councillor Patterson, seconded by councillor Keveney. All those in favor? Is there anyone opposed? That is carried. Okay, we're on item five A, which puts Kevin on deck. It is the Supportive Outreach Program Information and Funding Request, moved by councillor Mill and seconded by councillor Mackie. Thank you. Sorry, councillor Mackie. Kevin, you have the floor, sir.
It's been a while since I stood here. Good morning, Warden County Council. A pleasure to be here this morning to talk to you about Supportive Outreach Services, which is a new program for Gray County. So today, did this report be received and that we continue with Supportive Outreach Services in Gray County? And that we use approximately $140,000 of cannabis legalization implementation funding to support the program till March 31st? And that a request to the province be made for funding to continue this into 2023 and 2024. So like I said, Supportive Outreach Services actually started before it had a name. And it came to light and was developed last year, almost just over a year ago now, after a rooming house outbreak in southern Gray County. And what we found for that month was there's about 40 or so people in this rooming house that had a Delta outbreak of COVID. And they were unable to leave the premises and a lot of people in that location suffered from mental health and addictions problems. And our job that month was to treat them where they were at, keep them as safe as possible and make them as comfortable as possible. And it took a collaboration of a numerous amount of agencies and health organizations to do so. But we were successful in doing that. We maintained and developed a real relationship with the clients or friends at that location at that time. And through that month, we actually seen a lot of people get really improved their health. And what it was is that we were bringing care right to them. The other thing was is that, you know, as healthcare providers, we always think that we're number one. And to tell you the truth, we're not in helping people with mental health and addictions, especially homeless transient people with sometimes stigma against them. That that health isn't number one. Social supports, you know, where are they going to stay? What are they going to eat? What food are they going to have? And and I think when we meet those needs, then we can have the conversation about their health. And until that time, you're probably not going to. So we were able to do that. And from that point, we had to have some sort of a exit plan. But people didn't want us to leave and we really didn't want to leave all the inroads and good successes that we're having. So we stayed connected and we remain connected even to this day. And again, every other week, we're in Hanover and support them there. So very happy with the work that came from that. So that started on our journey of June and we worked through summer and then in October, again, with we seen the opioid calls and increases of that and and what we're seeing in the community, we decided to open another outreach market in Owen Sound. And the same partners came together to deliver that service at the market downtown. And so what we do is every week we're in, we call it the market, but it's Supportive Outreach Services. And in Hanover, in Owen Sound, there's a group of partners and it takes a lot of us to come together, health partners, public health, Greenberry Cell Services, CMHA, Gray County Paramedic Services, our social services, our housing. And then also the very important non-government and organizations like Salvation Army, O Share, United Way. Again, all them are on here, like, so everybody needs to get recognized, but it is a true partnership, a collaborative of working together to support people in these outreaches. And in the Hanover area, we see roughly about 30 to 40 people. And in the Owen Sound area, we see about 100 people. So there's quite a few people go through these markets each week and it's really like a low barrier, one-stop shop, whether you need social support, healthcare, connected to employment, housing, social services, even in Hanover, we're on court services. It's all in one spot. So there's a, there's no barriers for them to arrive there and we meet them where they're at. Through the project, very happy with public health. They supported us. When the outbreak happened, they were the lead on case contact management. We ran the operations that the group of us, the team was working together, but public health has stayed involved. And they do the planning, the organization and the evaluation group. So they are developing a logic model, making sure we meet the outcomes of our project. And they are doing an evaluation framework. We have done an evaluation already for Ontario Health West. And but there will be a more robust report towards the end of this year, early next year on the results. And they also bring forward the health impact assessment and, you know, help us identify challenges and how to mitigate those challenges to ensure we have equity. So we continue with these weekly markets, but we knew, you know, when we see people once a week and actually in each location, we only see them every other week. There were things that we were doing, like running blood tests and doing different tests or providing care. It's hard to follow up with when you only see them every other week. And sometimes good luck and also good timing. Ontario Health West actually reached out to us right at Christmas time and asked us if we would do a similar project and they were willing to fund it. And so we were able to bring our partners together and we looked at areas from across the province, particularly we looked at the home model in London and developed a program here where we would have what we call mobile SOS. And we'd bring that care directly to the, to the clients on the street. So this is what was developed and I've got to thank Lauren Gardner from Ontario Health West that helped put this together. She's far better at this type of stuff than I am. But as far as laying it all, what it looks like on a one-page pictograph. So we have our SOS mobile team here and it's overseen by two addiction specialist physicians. And then we have community paramedics, we have nurse practitioners with addictions background and we're lucky they have diabetes and primary care background. So they, they bring the full stop shop with us. Mental health counselor from CMHA and which is really interesting for health dollars, funding the social side of things, which I'm very happy with, that we have a social navigator that looks after food, clothing and any other social supports that they bring. And we form this team working out of an ambulance or a first response vehicle or wherever we could get that day. And we're out in the community and we are supported by that main group of partners that meet at the outreach market, which is a lot of people. We provide medical care. We do addictions treatment right on site. We give people injections of SUBLOCADE right in the ambulance right on the street. And that's a drug that helps them for 30 days. We do comprehensive mental health care and the big part of this is we navigate the system for them. That it's so important that these people, our friends there cannot navigate this system at all, like it's tough for them to meet the system. The system actually is developed for people to come to the system. Where in this population, we have to take the system to the person. So they, with that support and system navigation, also the social care and the wraparound care that they give them in that program is so important. So the importance of street outreach, like I said, you know, we go to doctor's appointments or any appointments, we have to have transportation, we have to sit sometimes for long periods of time. Quite often, the people we see on the street, typically these people are homeless, transient, sometimes coach surfing, nowhere to go, or they're precariously housed only for short periods of time. They're sick in the community. They're, they're very sick. And it's typically because of their addiction and mental health. And for them to be able to make appointments and meet appointments on time or even at all, you know, doesn't happen. And that's one thing I'm so proud of this team, like they really care. Like if you miss an appointment, they not only, they actually go out and find you, they know where you are. They know your friends and they actually go locate you and they'll make sure you get care of that day. And sometimes they have to drive a few places, but they will locate you and take care of you. But they also do system navigation and they help collaborate, you know, amongst all these services. So not only do we have those four or five agencies, but they bring the whole group of people that supports them. So just to give you an idea, since February 1st, we've seen 439 individual clients and 1,234 on our mobile team. And I would say it's probably more than that. As far as harm reduction supplies and that could be like safe use kits or an oxone, which is very important, 1,650 units of that. Basic items like could be clothing, food, those type of things, 368. And it's probably more likely more than that. It's hard enough to do the job, let alone trying to keep track of all stats. But, but anyways, we try to do that for the measurement of the program. And then the medical interventions, 387, that could be anywhere from treating an infection to do wound care, to doing addictions medicine right on the street. This is the, the fixed site locations. There's estimated attendance, 1,347. One thing, again, back to the social side of things. Like the social side of things is really where the conversation starts and it brings people to us. We feed everybody that day and we bring meals and so thankful to O Share, they actually supply these meals for us each and every market. United Ways there, or sorry, Salvation Army is there with food hampers. You know, a large number of organizations, public health, ourselves, CMHA, doing harm reduction, there's peer support there. And also a large amount of referrals to other agencies. And that just gives you an idea of what goes on at some of the markets, some of the stats. There's peer support, there's mental health counseling, our housing departments there, ID clinics, again, court support in Hanover. Housing intakes, we've done COVID vaccine vaccinations, food vouchers and Ontario Works and connecting people that they're on the system navigation. Through the evolution of this, again, you don't know what you don't know till you're in it. And one thing we found is the resources in the community are not there to meet the need. Typically SOS is there as an episodic where you go in and deal with the program, you'd like to connect them to other resources in the community. And we can connect them, but there's long wait times and like significant, not long, just significant wait times. And so what we found is we're, we have to retool and we're in the process of that right now. Our nurse practitioner was going to go to a halftime, even just finding a nurse practitioner with, you know, to commit one of temporary dollars, Greenberry Cell Services has been really good, but it's tough to attract them. They get other things that they have to do as well and other programs. But they have been able to commit a halftime nurse practitioner to us. And but also what we needed was more mental health support. So we're actually adding another mental health counselor to the team. We will extend more duties or skills to the community paramedic that even though the nurse practitioner is with us, they'll be doing medical direction directly with the paramedics through a patch and they'll be delivering the care through them that way. But the big thing we needed here was to, to be able to add more mental health supports because there's definitely not enough out there. So the initial pilot was funded for the first 12 weeks through Ontario Health West with the information that we gave them through the interim, we report, and then the final report, which was real quick, because it was only a 12-week program. But they ended up giving us $360,000 to continue. Our goal was to get to March 31st, 2023, so that we can continue to evaluate the program and deliver this care in the community. And what we're requesting today is to use the cannabis funding of approximately 140,000 because this program costs about $500,000 annually. We will be working with public health to do an evaluation of the program more robust. And, and so we look forward to that and be able to approach the government for secure-based funding in the future. But this will get us on the right stead to get us some time to be able to do that. Can't say enough about the partners. I'm going to say it again. I talked about this, probably one of the most things, the most proud of this group is the, other than the care that we're providing, is the partnerships. When we first had the market, Owen Sound and where in healthcare and this type of care, do you ever think that you'd ever say, maybe we have too many people coming today? And because we're worried about having, when people walk in, there might be too many people there. And that actually didn't work out that way because there's so many people come. I'm glad we had that many people there. But it's the partnership of all these agencies make it come together. And in the importance of the, of the social side of things. Like I knew it before, like he had my social determinants and health wheel, I keep it paced on my desk. But I never really knew it until I lived it a year ago. And how important it is to support people socially, whether it's housing, clothing, food, before you speak to both their health. And without these partner organizations, we just couldn't do it. And then from there, so lucky to have the health partners as well. Give an example, when the fire happened in Hanover, I was starting to get phone calls about four in the morning. Before seven that morning, we had a colleague from O Share coming down with food and coffee and we had the church open. We had mental health counselors coming, even the director was on the way, community paramedics, we had nurse practitioner arriving at nine. And then housing, social services, United Way, Salvation Army. By nine o'clock, we're like a humming shelter. And where else do you get that? Like, I think we should be pretty proud of that as a county and all the partner agencies working together. It was pretty remarkable to see. And again, I can't say enough about the partners. And this is, I like this picture because it just shows, you know, how paramedicine, you know, we're, we're just one cog in the wheel, one piece of the pie and how we can all work together. So we have a social navigator, a health counselor, a nurse practitioner and a paramedic all working in an ambulance. And 10 years ago, you probably never see that. And now when you look at the integration and where we're going, that is the key, where they were looking after people in the community with mental health and addictions, or looking after palliative care or frail elderly, it's all about partnerships. So, thanks.
Thank you very much, Kevin, for that report. And coming from Hanover, I got to tell you, we're so appreciative of our paramedics and of the work of the Support Outreach Services. Twice now, and quite the relationship that's been built there. And we know that these can be clientele that are difficult to form relationships with, but you folks have been with them for a while now. And you've got that relationship and those bonds where there's an element of trust there and that really helps. So thank you very much. Counsel, councillor Thomas.
I don't have a question, but a comment. I would just like to say to council, there's probably not a program the county offers that has the impact that this program has. Living in the Owen Sound Farmers Market, I'm in a unique position to observe the clinic every second Wednesday. And a lot of the people that come to the clinic I see on a regular basis in and around the downtown streets in Owen Sound. And this program is reaching these people and it is making such an impact. This is money well spent. We could spend probably twice as much, we could probably spend 10 times as much and still have need out there in the community. So I would be happy to move the recommendation, Mr. Warden. And I just can't say enough about the job you folks are doing with that clinic.
Thank you very much for that, councillor Thomas. It's already been moved and seconded. Yeah, I go to councillor Patterson first. I'll go to you next, councillor Mackie.
Thank you, Warden Hicks. I would just like to say thank you to Kevin and his team for being the leaders with this partnership. Not only do the individuals benefit, but so does our hospital and our police service and the overall community. And Kevin only hinted a bit, but he was the one that made the phone call that got the church open. I don't think I could even make that phone call and get the church open. But he has such a connection with that group that, like he said, the coffee was on and the volunteers were in there working and pleased to be called to help. So, thank you, Kevin. It really assisted with what we're calling the Hanover Fire. Thanks.
Thank you, councillor Mackie.
Thanks, Mr. Warden. And Kevin, I've heard yesterday, sorry, on Tuesday, the Mental Health Task Force received, we had about an hour and a half delegation from both Kevin and other members of the, the community partners on the work that they're doing. And you know, I heard about SOS, I think back in March, you know, through a Drug and Alcohol Addictions Task Force. And I was impressed from the very first time I heard about it. And I've been more and more impressed every time I hear more. So I just want to thank you for your passion towards our most vulnerable in our community, Kevin. This, this work is invaluable to the citizens that need it and we're making a difference. You're making a difference. Our community partners are making a difference. So I certainly support it. I don't know what we need to do going forward to try and prove to the province that this program needs to continue. But I think we need to put our backs behind that to do everything we can to keep this continuing. So thanks again.
You're gonna have to push your button.
Sorry, that's what makes it so easy is the passion of the people. Like when it first started, I said, well, I'm probably the first person to run the Zoom meeting. So I'm not sure. Because it was so new and I said, let's get together on Zoom. But yeah, there's so many people that are involved and take leadership roles. It's just, it's.
Yeah. Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Warden. Just with regard to the funding, you'll recall that we all received the cannabis implementation funding back in 2018. So the county has been maintaining those funds in a reserve since that time. The extension of paramedic services is an allowable expense under that program. And so as staff, we couldn't think of a better use for, for these funds. Asking for the funding to support this program to be extended beyond March 31st, 2023 is part of the delegation request that was made to the Ministry of Health this week. So hopefully we'll, we'll all gather together at AMO and, and be able to impress upon the province how important that is. The only other point I'd like to make is the social services relief funding that the county received as a result of COVID has been a significant part of what's allowed these community partners to be available and to support us as they do. And that SSRF funding is finished as of December 31st this year. I think there may be other people around the AMO table who share our concern that SSRF has been a wonderful support to really important community agencies. And it might be useful for the province to consider extension of that resource as well. Thanks.
Thank you very much, councillor, so ever.
Yes, I want to thank Kevin for his report. And this is certainly an excellent program. There is a need to reach out to people where, where they are because with the transportation services we have in Greenberry, they're, they're not likely to be able to come to us. So this is a great program and I wholeheartedly support it.
Thank you very much. I do not see any other hands. So with that said, it's time to call the question on the motion to receive your report, Kevin. To continue to work of the Street Outreach Services and to support it to the tune of $140,000 from the Cannabis Legalization Implementation Funding and further to request, make a request of the province for continued funding support. All those in favor? Is there anyone opposed? It's carried unanimously. Well done. Okay, we are next on to item five B, which is the fleet report that puts Pat, Linda and Jim, or one or all, I don't know, on deck. Okay, I've got Jim. Just one quick second. I'm going to put the item on the floor and then turn things over to you, sir. Moved by councillor Robinson, seconded by deputy warden McQueen. Okay, sir, you have the floor.
There we go. Good morning, Warden Hicks and Gray County Council. I'm here today to request report TRCW 2122 on the fleet review and green fleet strategy be received. And to request funding to issue an RFP to complete a feasibility study, review electrical upgrades to accommodate conversion to battery electric vehicles. I think Linda is, Linda Swanson is with us today. That's it? Okay. So she's here to answer any and all questions. Gray County Fleet Services maintains the county fleet of 109 vehicles, including half tons vans, ambulances, backhoes and tandem trucks. As well, we maintain six vehicles for Gray, Grayberry's Health Services and we also repair and service town of Blue Mountains Fire Department vehicles. Fleet challenge was retained in the fall of 2021 to review different aspects of fleet management and to give recommendations and as well on the green fleet, reading of the fleet. The report is somewhat overwhelming at 276 pages. I presented to you today what fleet challenge has observed and recommended. So review of current best practices, fleet challenges, recommending Gray County have a comprehensive fleet management information system, which is key to ensuring vehicle maintenance. Ensuring vehicle maintenance is done at the proper time as well as making it easier to schedule and routine vehicle maintenance should take place. Transportation services and IT staff are working to adapt steelworks to a fleet management information system. Whoever purchasing a fleet management system to help with inventory may be the best solution. Our fleet supervisor is investigating various fleet management information systems. Review of staff complement mechanic space. Fleet challenge reviewed the staffing and determined that one additional mechanic should be hired. Also, they suggest up to two additional mechanic space. When the new depot at Patrol D is constructed, one mechanic bay will be added. Request for an extra mechanic will be included in a future report on the review of transportation field staff. We will be including the purchase of the set of vehicle lifts in the 2023 fleet budget to be used at Aiden. And will be transferred to the new depot when it's completed. The review of chargeout rates. The review of the charger rates for internal repairs determine the need for fleet management information system. Capable of, capable of tracking all costs and enable the expansion of current chargeback system. Keeping track of every cost to charge an internal stakeholder takes a lot of time to make it less timing, time consuming per staff. We will investigate fleet services, owning the equipment and charge a monthly, yearly internal rate for each piece of equipment. Optimal life cycles. Fleet challenge suggested increasing the life cycles for half tons by two years and tenims by one year. As mentioned in the report, Gray County is large geographically and kilometers are higher on our half tons than our peers after seven years. We like to keep the turnover for half tons at seven years to get a decent residual value. However, we understand the lifecycle to match availability of electric half tons going forward. Ten replacements are based on the condition of the truck at 10-year mark for replacement 12 years. When electric tandem, when electric tans are available for snow plowing, the equipment replacement schedule will be reviewed. Fuel alternatives, they touched on this briefly. Fleet challenge recommendation to implement the use of alternative fuels such as biodiesel, natural gas or E85 flex fuel. Is expensive, expensive to implement, requiring extra fuel tanks or infrastructure yards. Biodiesel requires a heated tank to prevent it from gelling and plow trucks could not be parked outside. There are no local storage facilities for biodiesel or E85 fuel and would require a field being brought from directly from the terminal when required. Flex fuel is expensive and doesn't have the same range as regular gasoline. In discussion with fleet challenge, Gray County would prefer to allocate funds the conversion of battery, battery electric vehicles rather than an interim step of fuel conversion. Purchasing versus leasing, leasing, fleet challenge determined through their analysis. It's cheaper for Gray County to purchase vehicles than to lease. And on to the finals, final one is screening of the fleet. Internal combustion engines will not be available to purchase after 2035. Gray County has issued a request for information for two battery electric vehicles to be purchased next year. Currently, there are no battery electric tans being manufactured to have the range required for snow plowing. Fleet challenge recommended a cautious approach to greening the fleet. Full implementation should be carried out over the next 10 to 15 years. The first step is completing a feasibility study to review each facility, determine what is required to convert to battery electric vehicles. This would be an extensive study addressing all vehicle locations within Gray County. Our, our transportation depots, the administration building in Owen Sound and the ambulance spaces. We'll be focusing on providing analysis of the charging stations for Gray County fleet and not focus on the public charging station programs. If there are, he would, there are few would be issued shortly. Gray County will continue to reach out to other municipalities, including lower tier buying groups to get their input and perspective on conversion of battery electric vehicles. Gray County staff will continue to investigate federal or provincial grants to assist with installation of infrastructure for battery electric vehicles. In conclusion, Gray County is at the beginning of the journey to reduce greenhouse gas emissions through the greening of the fleet. And the first step is to undertake a feasibility study. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions from staff? Councillor Robinson?
Thank, thank you very much, Mr. Warden. And I was very excited.
Thank, thank you very much, Mr. Warden. And I was very excited about this reporting in the connection with transportation, but also climate action. And I I know as we're moving towards reducing our GHGs, this is obviously a report. Should it be approved by council? That's going to contribute to Gray County achieving our goals with regard to climate action. I was just wondering, is there a way that we would be able to capture that data so that should this be approved? Well, is there some sort of metrics that will identify the reduction of the greenhouse gas emissions? And also is there a tie in with respect to asset management, that plan that that wonderful plan that was just submitted ahead of the deadline? So that's a two parter climate action, also asset management. Thank you very much.
So I'll defer the asset management question to another speaker, but through the chair in terms of capturing the greenhouse gas emission reduction. Part of the reporting of going green and gray is to conduct an annual counting of the emissions from our corporate assets. And so certainly the emissions associated with operating our fleet are within that. And so what we would see is as we transition to battery electric, our our fleet related corporate emissions will decrease.
Yeah, I I think all I would say about the asset management plan, I mean, this is very early days. There's a lot of costs in here that aren't really pinned down yet. And the costs are quite variable. We've been looking into getting electric vehicles are hard to get right now because everybody's kind of jumping on the bandwagon, especially with the with the price of gas and everyone's desire to to reduce our gases. So as the asset management plan keeps going forward, these are things we're all going to keep bringing in if they're not already accounted for. So it's kind of a living document thing that we're trying to, you know, keep this going with our transition to electric fleet.
And I would just add that the the extensions, the life extensions that were suggested in the report, I think are also helpful if we can extend the life of of a vehicle or a class of vehicles, then that lowers our, you know, total cost of ownership overall.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I see the tie into both really impressed with the report and thank you to staff for for bringing this forward and I'd encourage my colleagues to support the recommendations at hand. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Robinson. Anyone else? Counselor Swerber?
Yes, and thank you for this report. It's it's very good. And certainly there are a lot of options and the technology is changing very rapidly as we speak. So we're getting extended, you know, range for vehicles and 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 also different technologies are coming into effect like hydrogen. I know Mayor Body always talks about that. So my question is, should we not in our feasibility study? Look at the option of leasing if there is one, but because the technology is changing so fast. You know, if we buy something, maybe in three years' time, there's something much better and cheaper coming out. And might we not like look at, you know, what are the changing technologies that are on the horizon and how might they impact our strategy? Because in something that's changing this quickly, I know in the mining space, nobody thought of electric vehicles underground a few years ago, and now they're being implemented. And there's a huge change in a lot of things and people that bought whole fleets of diesel powered vehicles are now going. Oh, I wish we didn't buy those because if we have them on a lease basis, we'd be able to just terminate the lease and switch over. So you know, I I'm just wondering whether we maybe should include that in our feasibility study is the consideration of alternative technologies and what impact they might have on our strategy.
Sorry, yeah, through you, Warden Hicks, we put on an RFI for electric vehicles for half times, but I think it's a broader range and look at other other vehicles as well, like nothing hybrids, but so I hope, yeah, I agree, we should be looking at all options to to get to to check up to where we want to go.
Counselor Mackey?
Thanks, Mr. Warden. Certainly appreciate the report. I am glad the transportation services is taking a cautious approach. And that, you know, whatever is planned is going to be doable. You mentioned in the report about 2035 and the transition away from, you know, all gas and diesel motors at that time. I guess my question is, will our electrically electrical grid sustain that? Do we have the power? You know, in 2035, I've read a report where we would need across the country 10 new nuclear plants and 100 hydroelectric plants. I don't know if that's accurate. But if it's anywhere close, then we've got a lot of building to do to get ready for our electrical grid. So anyways, thank you.
I can I can try and take us out and Linda might be able to provide some further information as well. Yeah, that I know the the province and Hydro One and other authorities are looking at this. We we need their support in order to look at any overall grid improvements to the, in our case, the Ontario grid to be able to move forward with where where this is going. We've we've heard from auto manufacturers that they're going to be only providing EV vehicles by certain years. So we know this is what's happening. And in order to support us all going into this direction of of looking at alternative fuel vehicles, we need the grid to support that. So I know it's actively being looked at and we're going to need those strong partners at provincial level and through OPG and Hydro One and others to be able to move forward with upgrades to the overall grid in order to be able to support where we're going. So so it's going to be done. We anticipate it's going to be done in tandem as we move, as we all collectively move forward to switching to EVs that the grid upgrades are going to be there to support it. And so that's something that we'll have to be cautiously moving forward and looking at making sure that those upgrades are occurring. And that may be something is again, as future delegations to AMO and others to make sure that that's going to be something that's there when we when we are utilizing these technologies in order to support our our future fleet and and future upgrades collectively as a community.
Okay. For those who didn't hear, he said he appreciates the optimism. Anyone else? Seeing no one else, then I'll call the question on the motion before us to proceed with an RPF for feasibility study of electric upgrades to accommodate conversion to battery electric vehicles. And that the funding for that feasibility study either come from surplus within the transportation services budget or from the general reserves in transportation. All those in favor? Is there anyone opposed? That is Carrie. Thank you. Okay, just your brief indulgence. Okay, we'll proceed on. We're going to deal with item 5C, which puts Liz or Scott on deck. We're dealing with the affordable housing planning tools. I need a mover and second or two, put the item on the floor, moved by Counselor Carlton, seconded by Counselor Burley. And Scott, you have the floor, sir.
Sorry about that. Thanks, Warden Hicks, and members of Committee of the Whole. We find ourselves in a familiar position again with the planners reporting right before lunch. But I will try to keep this concise, although it is a very, very important topic and one we've had lots of discussions on. So just for committee's benefit, I'd like to first acknowledge all the people that contributed to this report. So Liz Buckton played a heavy role in this report. She's unable to to join us today, but I'd like to acknowledge her role as well as Michael Leturno, Kim Wingrove and Randy Schertz are all had direct oversight into this report. And I think based on all the input into the report, it is a better report and like to acknowledge that input. So this report is coming to you based on some recent discussions we've had both at this table and discussions we've seen with the development community and and across the broader public community. So we wanted to provide counsel with with a few things. We wanted to give them a bit of an oversight of of some of the tools that we believe as staff we have available to us under the Planning Act, the provincial policy statement and our own official plans. We also wanted to provide a summary of the the wonderful leadership shown by both county council and our member municipal councils to date. I think sometimes we we can get mired a bit in the day to day and and it's only through looking back and particularly on this term of council to see all the action that's been made on 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 this portfolio. So kudos again to councils at at both levels. And then we also wanted to provide an update on on the Abbott's decision, which was recently received by the Ontario Land Tribunal as well as as a recommendation for some further advocacy to senior levels of government with respect to some additional tools that might help empower additional actions in this regard from from the county and our member municipalities. So first off, with respect to some of the the tools we have available to us, first and foremost, as planners, we take our direction from from the Planning Act. That's the primary piece of legislation that we work under. And in in some of the recent discussions with council, there have been some some there have been some discussions about specific sections of the Planning Act and the first being section 51 sub 24. Maybe Tara, sorry, if we could just take down that presentation, that's actually meant for the Affordable Housing Task first tomorrow. So many discussions on housing. It's all it's all good stuff, though. My apologies for the confusion there. So yeah, with respect to the the section 5124 of the Planning Act, this is a section that that directs staff and and approval authorities to look at certain criteria before before considering a plan of subdivision or a plan of condominium. There's a specific subsection there which speaks to if any affordable housing units are being proposed that they consider the suitability of the proposed units for for affordable housing. So in staff's interpretation of of this piece of the legislation, this still is discretionary. Although we know that the province through the the Planning Act and through the direction in the provincial policy statement is 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 highlighting the importance and and need for affordable housing across our communities. They haven't gone so far yet as to suggest that we need to be implementing affordable housing into into all of our developments. So it is it is discretionary in that regard. There's further tools in the Planning Act at 51 sub 25 that allow approval authorities to impose conditions on plans of subdivision condominium. And this table will be very familiar with those conditions because every time we see a draft approval of a development, there's anywhere from about 25 to to maybe 50 conditions imposed. And a lot of them are standard things in terms of street naming and parkland dedication and finalization of the engineering. Staff do not believe we have the ability at this stage to impose direct conditions mandating affordable housing in this regard. There's there's some comments that have been made by staff, but also some comments that you'll see in the the Ontario Land Tribunal decision would speak to making sure that making sure these conditions imposed are equitable. Furthermore, we we see difficulty in in implementing a condition to mandate affordable housing in this regard with respect to carrying it through beyond just the first owner. And so just to 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 summarize that the challenge with respect to affordable housing is if we can create the unit and affordable price and and the unit is sold or rented at an affordable price. How are we going to ensure that that unit stays affordable for for a certain period of time or ideally even through the lifetime of the unit? And if the unit is is sold by a private developer to a private landowner, it could be that that first landowner is is getting a good price. But they may choose to sell it in a few years' time and it it may be out of the affordable range at that point. With respect to other tools that that do exist that we see a lot of potential for under the Planning Act, there's there's three key tools that we summarized. One is the use of community benefits charges. And while I say we see potential in this, we think that community benefits charges might be a tool that's better suited to to some larger communities across the province and might not be as viable in in the in the Gray County framework. Community benefits charges have replaced the former legal bonusing provisions for for added density and height. And community benefits charges work more like a development charge in that regard. But based on some of the limitations the provinces has imposed on community benefits charges, they're they're less likely to be used here. And so some of those limitations have been highlighted in the report, including they can only apply to a development of a building or structure with five or more stories in height. Obviously, we don't see a lot of five or six or seven story buildings across the county. And they also speak to a development of a proposed building or structure with 10 or more residential units. That's something we definitely do see and we are seeing with increasing regularity in terms of both apartment and condo buildings. But the height is is one that's challenging. The other thing I'd point out with respect to community benefit charges or CBCs, as they're called, is that they they are only available to to local or single tier municipalities. So so the county wouldn't have the ability to to impose such a charge. But we could look to assist municipalities if they were looking to go down that road. One of the other tools that we saw great potential for with respect to the Planning Act was was when the province introduced the ability for for inclusionary zoning. Some of the more seasoned members around this table might remember that numerous times the county advocated to the province that, hey, we need inclusionary zoning, we need inclusionary zoning. And and finally, it was included in the Planning Act. And and just to to give a an understanding of what inclusionary zoning is, it allows a municipality where they have policies in their official plan where they've completed what's called an assessment report to mandate X percentage of of affordable housing in certain areas. So it might be that there's some areas in your municipality, particularly in your service settlement areas, maybe close to your downtown or in certain residential air residential areas that you would mandate. We want, you know, 20% or 30% of the units in these areas per development to be affordable. Now, just almost as soon as the province introduced inclusionary zoning, they they made further changes through a past piece of legislation called Bill 108 that that pulled back on on some of the the availability of those tools to only allow inclusionary zoning in prescribed areas or where where it was in a protected major transit station area. So that doesn't apply in Gray. That would be your higher order transit like a go station or or something that oak. Or where a municipality has a development permit system in place. And for those that might be unfamiliar, a development permit system would replace your current zoning bylaw and site plan process and allow for a single development permit to be issued for development. And so the need to have that development permit system has been a major barrier to municipalities, certainly in this area and outside of those protected major transit station areas to to utilize the tools under inclusionary zoning. So one of the recommendations of this report that we'll get to later on is to advocate to the province that we consider opening up inclusionary zoning to be able to be used by a wider range of municipalities, including our our member municipalities in Gray. And finally, the third tool we highlight is with respect to community improvement plans. And and these are our plans that you're well familiar with because seven of the nine municipalities in Gray have a community improvement plan in place and and the other two are working on it. And this closely follows the county's community improvement plan template, which was established a few years ago and funding from the county to further look at incenting affordable housing and and other important community objectives in that regard. With respect to some of the more traditional planning tools, we see, of course, there's always our our official plans and zoning bylaws that can do things like permit a wide range of densities. They can prezone lands such that if a developer wanted to come in and and build housing, they wouldn't need a zoning amendment. And and they can also include things like additional residential units or or sort of secondary apartments, whether in in the main dwelling itself or in the in an accessory building. Another tool the province has just recently opened up through Bill 109 is their accelerator tool. And this is something staff are certainly looking into further. With respect to the provincial policy statement, there's some very directive wording in the provincial policy statement to A, define what affordable housing is at a at a ownership and rental level as well as noting that planning authorities shall provide for an appropriate range and mix of housing options. And and it goes on to speak about about establishing targets and not just establishing targets, but implementing those targets as well. And and that's a key distinction there. And certainly the county has established targets, but it's the implementation that remains a challenge given our our current tool. Given our our current tools. And I will say with respect to the province's definition of affordable, which is carried forward in our own county official plan. It is very tough for for private developers to meet that threshold, given the current land prices and and building supply costs and approvals processes. We don't see a lot of private market development coming in at that threshold. We do see some development coming in with attainable housing, which maybe isn't as strict a bar to meet. But the affordable is is met more often by the not for profits and or our own county housing in that regard. And then finally, with respect to the the tools we have locally in terms of our own county official plan. As I noted, we do have a target in there of thirty percent of new housing units to be affordable. It's noteworthy that in section four point two sub F of the county plan where we establish this target. We also use the words would like to achieve a a minimum target. And and that wording was carefully chosen because it was felt that we didn't have the strong authority to say we shall achieve. Because we didn't have the tools like inclusionary zoning to 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 really make that a a must rather than a a nice to have. And and certainly if we did have those tools, we'd love to be able to to strengthen that wording and and go into discussions with developers. With with a little stronger foothold in that regard. I will say there's a number of positive things in the county official plan, both in the current official plan and and being proposed through official plan amendment number eleven with respect to things like the density with respect to things like tiny homes, additional residential units. So there are, there is some headway being made there, but but again, the implementation of of the strong thirty percent target is a challenge. And then next, with respect to the the recently received Abbott's Ontario Land Tribunal hearing. The the tribunal did did support the development and approve the development. The tribunal, however, did not support the town's request for for the affordable units in that regard. And there's some some interesting wording in in their decision. First and foremost, they note that they find the town's request to be both heartfelt and sincere. However, it's not reasonable, it's not relevant or equitable in the case of the proposed development. So the the Ontario Land Tribunal goes on to to list some of the tools that might be available, including some of the policy options. Similar to what I've just outlined to you earlier in this report. And and they also note the importance of of updating our official plans in that regard. They do note that that any such request has to be equitable and and reasonable in the context of of how we're applying it. And they they further note that in this case, previous applicants in the town were not made to provide this this thirty percent. And and so while while this particular tool perhaps wasn't successful. County staff really want to work with our member municipalities and also senior levels of government to explore all options we can. Because we know that across the county, we need we need more affordable housing and and councillor so ever. Shared some wonderful news this morning in our good news and celebration section. To say that there've been recent discussions with developers on on maybe what we'll call the the voluntary approaches with respect to affordable housing. And so that's great to see that leadership at the town level. And we're seeing it right across the county in in terms of all of our other municipalities as well. And certainly as staff, we we still want to work with developers in that regard. And and identify very early on, even at the pre-submission consultation process. That affordable housing is is a a strong, strong, strong desire across the community, both at the the council level who have shown leadership. And at at the municipal level in that regard. I will say that we do know that there've been a a number of developers that have been keenly watching the Abbott's case to see what kind of what kind of direction it would provide for their future applications. And then finally, and I'll wrap up here very shortly, I I did want to highlight some of the the leadership, particularly that the county is showing on affordable housing. Because as I said, it's 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 easy to get caught in the day to day and 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 forget the things that have happened even a year ago or two years ago. And so council will recall in in March of twenty twenty, we had the first meeting of the County Affordable Housing Task Force. And this was perhaps one of the last meetings we had in person before we all went online in that regard. And there've been a number of meetings since then, and and I'm sure those that sit on the task force or those that have watched the videos or read the minutes. Will agree that that it's been an eye opening experience. There's been a number of wonderful reports presented there. And and furthermore, beyond just the reports and the talking, there's been a number of action items that have have come out of there, including the creation of a housing action plan. Including council showing leadership by by setting aside one percent of the levy for an affordable housing fund. There's further work being done with respect to looking at surplus county and municipal lands for the purposes of affordable housing. I've already mentioned the community improvement plan template program. There's been exemptions for for purpose built rental units on development charges. As well as for for not for profit units or units that are funded through the community improvement plans. As I said, there's been planning policy updates and I should should be clear that these aren't just at the county level. A number of municipalities have taken action in in their official plans and zoning bylaws in that regard. There's also been comments from the county on the Bill one oh nine legislation. And and one of the things in in those comments is is to again further empower municipalities and counties with additional tools in that regard. And then finally, there's been the recent supportive housing development in in Owen Sound. So that's sort of a summary of of the the highlights of the report. We are recommending that the report be received. We're recommending that we share this report with our member municipalities for for information purposes. And we're recommending that this report could provide some of the background information that we use to inform the the delegation request to the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing as part of the coming AMO conference here later this year. So that's all I have at this stage, but certainly be happy to take any questions if there are any.
Thank you very much, Scott. Counselor, are there any questions? Counselor Mackey.
Thanks, Mr. Warden. Thanks very much, Scott. And I really liked the suit. We just need a disco ball hanging above you. No, seriously, it a lot of really good information. I'm just wondering about in the definition of affordable. You know, it talks about ten percent less than the market average or thirty percent of the the gross annual household income. So I guess in particular, the thirty percent of the gross annual income. When houses are averaging seven hundred thousand up here. So if you take ten percent and knock it off, it's still not really affordable. It's six hundred and thirty thousand. The thirty percent, what would a person or a family household need to be making? To be able to afford from the affordability definition to afford a house in Gray County? Any idea?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Warden. Thank you for that question, Counselor Mackey. So just to clarify, that affordable test, whether it be ownership or whether it be rental. Is a two-fold test and what it's meant to to set out is that you you would run both scenarios essentially. So you would look at both the thirty percent and and one of the key caveats to the thirty percent is it's thirty percent of gross annual gross annual household income for low and moderate income households. So so to be, you know, somewhat blunt there, the 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 households that are making two million dollars a year in household income aren't included in that calculation. And and so then you take the lower value of the thirty percent and or the the ten percent, whichever one comes to to the lower number there. I don't have a specific figure for you in terms of what that household income is. It's something that we're working with our our planning data analysis coordinator on in terms of looking at some of the most recent data sets on the two thousand twenty one census. To really look at for each of our nine member municipalities, what that number is. And then we've also been working with staff in our housing department or our community services department with respect to the thresholds and the numbers they use. I know in in recent discussions with the housing department, they had they had twenty twenty one numbers from from the province. They hadn't yet received the twenty twenty two numbers. And they were suggesting that for some of their programming, the the affordable range for a unit was right around three hundred thousand dollars for a unit. And that's not to say that necessarily has to be a a single detached dwelling. That could be, you know, semi detached or a townhouse or or even a condo unit. But we know that that three hundred thousand dollars is is a lot less than what we're seeing. Many units go for on the open market in that regard.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counselors, so ever.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden, and and thank you, Scott, for that report. I've had a chance to review the report and I did discuss it with our legal counsel as well. So the, I think it's a great report and I'm glad we're starting with this discussion in into what are the tools? In the beginning of the report where it refers to only section D one of the Planning Act. It I would point out that our case also mentioned section twenty four A, which is the effect of development on the proposed subdivision on matters of provincial interest, which affordable housing is one of those and also whether the plan confirms to the official plan. We take a rather more positive view on our official plan in terms of what the abilities are in our official plan. To ask a developer with regard to attainable housing. In fact, there's a number of areas in our official plan that are quite strong. But I I don't see that we've used, but maybe, you know, more than I do because you deal with the applications. So under four point one, the on re- under residential intensification, it says we we will ask developers to consider the checklist of the healthy development checklist. Which includes the including the variety of affordable housing options for low income households. And so we are, it says that we we ah we provide them with that developer with that checklist and then we ask developers to consider the checklist as part of the application process. And county's planning staff will review the information provided and recommend changes. Also, under nine thirteen, plans of subdivision, it says in any new applications for a plan of subdivision or plan of condominium. Submitted to the county for approval, the proponent will need to consider and be prepared to justify the following. And one of the items in the long list, so I won't read the whole list. Is the provision of attainable housing. So we can ask them to consider it. And then when it comes to nine seventeen, which is complete application. That even on our application form on page seven, it says estimated selling retail price of units if known. So I'm just wondering. You know, how often we do that? And furthermore, when we get to what is a complete application? Under there, it says it's supposed to include information as required in Ontario Regulation five forty four oh six. Or any future successor to this regulation and Schedule one of five forty four oh six. Includes an explanation of how the plan is consistent with policy statements issued under subsection three point one of the act. Which includes the provincial policy statement. So we're taking the view that there are a number of tools that already exist. And we also, under nine four of the plan, we have a section which is monitoring of the plan. And it says we will collect data which talks about the range and market value of housing types, including the percent affordable housing measured in relation to the benchmark. Set out in section four point one of this plan to be done on an annual basis. So I know there's quite a list there. But like, are we doing all of this? Because I don't see that we're doing all of this. And, you know, I just like to know if you know, there are tools that maybe we could use and we're not using. And then I, Mr. Warden, if you'll allow him to answer before I get on to what we are going to be appealing the case, and I'd just like to speak a bit about that.
Thank you, sir. So Scott, I don't know if this is all yours or if Mr. Letourneau will be weighing in, but I'll let you begin.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, through you. And and thank you, councillor so ever, for 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 your comments and and for your your review of of some of the Planning Act tools as well as our official plan tools. So to maybe answer the end of your question first, no, we're not doing all that. More specifically, what we haven't been able to keep up with since Recolor Gray was was passed in in June of twenty nineteen is the annual monitoring. And that's definitely what we're trying to get a handle on now. And and again, in working with our our data folks, they see that twenty twenty one census as as a key data point. But they also want to look to help us set up a model going forward on how we could we could better monitor and 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 track some of these numbers, ideally in-house without without needing a consultant. With respect to some of the other tools you've mentioned in specifically in the county official plan, those are discussions we're having with developers and 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 a lot of the wording is around, you know, shall consider and and everything else. And and so quite often, you know, a developer knocks on the proverbial door, so to speak, and says, hey, listen, I'd like to buy this land. And I'd like to install a residential development kind of thing. You know, the first questions, whether it be county staff or whether it be municipal staff, would be, okay, what are you looking at? What what forms of housing are you looking at? And I would say ten years ago, twelve years ago, when we had those discussions, ninety nine percent of the time, it would be, we're looking at single detached dwellings. And and you know, even back then, we were saying, hey, you know, there's there's other forms too. There's there's apartment buildings, there's semis, there's towns and everything else. And, you know, quite often, again, ten, twelve years ago, the answer was, yeah, thanks, but no, thanks. And and so that's one of the reasons through Recolor Gray, we did try to institute some stronger policies to to require a wider range of housing. And I think I think the development community has come around on that. And and in those conversations, we're seeing a lot of, listen, we're happy to do towns, we're happy to do semis. We've seen some developments with apartment buildings as well. But when we raise the affordable piece, a lot of it comes back to okay, well, listen, if we're going to even consider that, what money does does the county or other other levels of government have on the table to assist us with that? And and if if there's little monies available, then then they simply say, listen, we we can't do it. It doesn't it doesn't fit within our performer. The other challenge there and and just for 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 council's consideration. So when we're, when council as as a body is approving a draft plan of subdivision. What you're approving in that regard is essentially the layout of the subdivision, the lot lines. So we have an idea at that point of of, you know, whether there's going to be singles, semis, towns, apartment blocks, where the roads are going to be and everything else. But we don't necessarily have any idea, even if they've specified in their application forms and or their their justification reports. What those units are going to ultimately sell for. And there's generally the assumption that if we're if we're building townhouses, then for the most part, those are likely going to be more affordable than than the single detached dwellings. But there's certainly no guarantee of that. And and the other challenge there, and it's come up a number of times, is when when that approval is given, that approval is given, you know, to the land, so to speak. And and at any point, the land ownership could change. So developer A goes through the application process, says, this is what we're going to do. We're going to build some townhouses. We're going to build some semis and everything else. And and then upon draft approval, they sell the land. And and if they sell the land to developer B and developer B is offering a more high end product and chooses to install, you know, high end fixtures in all their homes, then then what was otherwise maybe going to be affordable or even attainable could could not be. And and that's the challenge right now is those implementation tools. Even if we've got a a a well meaning developer on the line to say, listen, we're looking to do this. How do we ensure that happens? And and, you know, we we work with a great development community and 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 we do take them at their word on many cases. But we have to be cognizant that that these these land ownerships can change, and so too can the intentions of the developers in that regard. So one of the things coming out of this report in in terms of sharing it, sharing with the member municipalities is to start to discuss both with with planning staff to planning staff. And and if we need to in involve our our legal resources as well, is is to really look at all the tools, the tools in the legislation. And and in our planning policies and and our zoning bylaws to understand what we feel we have a strong foothold on and what we don't. And then, as I said, to to advocate for more of those tools. So I apologize, that was a bit of a long winded answer, but happy to address any more questions if there are any.
Madam CEO.
Unrelated to the excellent points that that Scott just made, but I think important context for councils to have is just how quickly the ground is shifting under all of our feet when it comes to interest rates and the cost of developing these projects. While we were discussing here, I ran the numbers from the Financial Consumer Agency of Canada around mortgage affordability. And right now, the rules with the mortgage stress test are the bank must use the higher interest rate of either five and a quarter or the interest rate you negotiate with your lender plus two percent. The best, the best five year rate in the Globe and Mail today is four point six nine. So that is about six point six nine that you'd be calculating, you'd be getting at a stress test. The median household income in Gray County, and this was from the last census, was about sixty five and change. If you think somebody's making nineteen dollars an hour, they're Dollars an hour, they're bringing in about thirty five thousand dollars a year. So if you're a couple, you're around seventy. So if we run. A gross household income at sixty six thousand dollars a year. At that. Five and a quarter. But that you can't probably qualify it anymore. The bank would give you two hundred and forty thousand dollars, assuming that you had fifty thousand dollars down. Not not sure, that's a high hill to climb for folks. Where we are today, that affordability has eroded. To two hundred thousand dollars. That the bank would allow you and that's with a three hundred and fifty dollar car payment per month. And again, I'm not sure what vehicle you would be able to get that would provide a a three hundred and fifty dollar a month car payment. So this is a situation that despite all of our efforts. Is on a trajectory that's very, very difficult for people. So I just wanted to bring that to the table as well.
Thank you. Those are sobering numbers. Um, councilor, so ever.
Yes, thank you, Mister Warden. And you know, Scott and Kim both raised very good points. And that is really. To address some clarity around the wording and the implementation differences in wording and implementation is really why. We're challenging this and we are going to be appealing. The land tribunal's decision. We we will be issuing a notice of appeal. Hopefully it'll get resolved upon review at the land tribunal and we don't have to. Then pull the trigger on the notice of appeal to divisional, but. Certainly, it within the ruling, there are a couple of paragraphs that weren't in the staff report. And one being particularly important is that the member judging our case did not appear to apprehend or understand actually what we were arguing. And I don't know whether, why why that is, because I thought it was quite clear. In that we were arguing that. Fifth section fifty one. Twenty four does provide the tools in the planning act. As does the provincial policy statement, which says establish and implement. Why would the provincial policy statement have the word implement? If it. If the government hasn't given any powers for people to implement. I mean, you know, you can't have a policy statement that says implement. When. There's no way to implement. So we we maintain that in in the official plan, there are tools to implement. And but with regard to the ruling. It in paragraph one thirty nine, it said. That all parties agreed that the proposed development had regard to matters of provincial interest. And conformed to both county and town official plans. And we did not agree as the tribunal stated here. That it did have regard to matters of provincial interest or confirmed unconform to the plans. Also, I'd like to direct the council's attention to paragraph one fifty three. Where it says, council for the appellant provide the tribunal of a copy. Of an email sent from Mister Treslin's office. Mister Treslin is the outside counsel. For the county. As he was unable to attend closing arguments. And so the email was read into the record as follows. And it says, Mister Treslin, solicitor for the county grave regrets. That his trial is currently ongoing that that he is unable to make final submissions. On the issue of the request by the town for the conditions relating to affordable housing. This is a request of concern to the county. Mister Treslin. Has reviewed my submissions. Relating to the issue and adopts them as his own on behalf of the county, absent inclusionary zoning. Powers or legal bonusing, the county submits it has no legal authority to impose a condition. Requiring the dedication of affordable housing by a private developer. In any manner nor where they asked to in this instance. The county further submits.
Well, I've I've got to stop you for a second. There is a point of order by councillor Woodbury.
We're discussing the report. And. Some of the the things from the report. That have been. Quoted here. I don't believe that we're discussing the award of the Ontario Land Tribunal. And since it's already been declared that there's an appeal. Which would be a legal process. I wonder about the. Whether this is the appropriate place to. Be, if there is a question to be asking our staff. Without. In open session without having. Written things in in front for this. I I appreciate the information that's being shared. But I'm just not sure if we're into a realm that we shouldn't be. When we're. Discussing with this report. And and. You know, if it's under appeal, then possibly in the future, we shouldn't be relying on this until the appeal, the any of its information until the appeal has been heard.
Thank you, councillor Woodbury. I'm sympathetic to your comments. But I'm going to rule that the point of order is not valid in the sense that. The report, the staff report does report about the. The tribunal's decision. And I I think it's proper that councillor so ever comment. About that, given that it's in the report. However, councilor, so ever, I would ask you to keep your comments on that brief because you have indicated that. It's a a point of appeal and and I think the appropriate place for. The sort of weeds, getting into the weeds about the arguments about your appeal are properly someplace else.
Thank you, Mister Warden. I understand that the the appeal may be filed on tomorrow, but it's so it's not under appeal just now. But. Yeah, with regard to that, I just wanted council to know that the county further submits that this tribunal has no jurisdiction to impose such a condition. And it goes on to say, if such a condition were imposed. It would amount to expropriation without compensation. So my question. To staff is. Given that this is written in the first person or it was conveyed by the. Proponent's lawyer and it's written in the as if it's his writing. Is this an accurate reading of the? Of the county's position first, that's what I'd like to know and and you know, because. It suggests that this is a reading from an email from Mister Treslin. But it says Mister Treslin has reviewed my submission. So if that's a quote from the email, it would appear that. Mister Burton actually wrote this. So is it this, in fact? The proper reading? Do we have a copy of that email and is this? A proper representation of the email and is this really the county's position?
I'm going to turn things over to our legal counsel, Mister Letourne.
Thank you, Warden, and good afternoon, County Council. Yes, that. What is to, I don't have the decision in front of me, but what was reported in there. Was the text of an email that was. Read into the record at the tribunal by. Mister Al Burton. Acting as agent for. Errol Treslin, who is the county's solicitor with respect to it. As it notes, Mister Treslin was unavailable at the time the submissions are being made. And he sent. That. Email to Mister Burton and he read it in, so it is an email from. It is a statement from. Mister Treslin. Accordingly.
So the the. The issue that I'm extremely concerned about is that the county is taking the position that a planning condition, if imposed by the. Tribunal and you maybe, you know, the decision gets reversed on appeal, so this is still. An item. Is going to be expropriation, because if I was a developer. I would say, okay, I've been imposed, it's been imposed on me now that six units here have to be affordable. And but the county has made an argument that this amounts to expropriation. So I'm going to be sending an invoice to the county. So that concern was expressed to me by our council and and I'm I'm concerned about that. And just on, in closing, I would. Like to say that all we're trying to do here. Is make sure that the language that you see in the planning act. And the provincial policy statement, which says we you shall set and implement. And that council has and planning authorities have to have regard for the provision of affordable housing. Now we're hearing. From the tribunal and and county is taking a position. On the side of the proponent. That there are no tools. And I think. Even if we lose even on appeal, that's a win, because then we can go to the province and say, look. We're trying our best, we have no tools, but I do wanna. I hope we do try our best, because I think. Even in our current official plan. We can ask people to justify, we can ask them to give us price points, we can ask them. To do that in their application and not consider their application. Complete unless they justify to us. Why they're not providing affordable housing. Maybe they do say. It's not economically feasible and here's what it is. But until we have that discussion and ask them. To at least live up to what's already in there. You know, we can't say that we're doing everything that we can and so I hope we start doing everything that we can. And we're going to keep pushing this because there needs to be a clear decision. By as high as a court as possible that we don't, we either have the tools and tell us how we apply them or. Tell us that we don't have the tools, in which case we can go to the province and say, look, we tried our best. There are no tools, we need the tools. Give us the tools. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor server. I don't think there's a. A need for any response to that, but your point is well made. Okay, anyone else? Saying no further hands, it's perhaps time to call the question on the motion before us. Which is to receive this report and to share it with our member municipalities and to use the contents therein. For our delegation at the with the municipal affairs and housing ministry. At the upcoming AMO conference, councillor, so ever, you have something else?
I'd like to move an amendment that. We direct staff to rigorously apply all the affordable housing tools in the current county official plan. And that council directs staff to consider. What additional tools we can incorporate into. On official plan amendment eleven.
Let's just take a second to capture that. Clerk. And I will need a second here, frankly. On that motion to amend, move seconded by county deputy warden McQueen. We'll just take a second to get it. Up before you. Yeah, do you mind providing some clarification on? Well, you probably can't see it, can you? No. Perhaps Madam Clerk, you could read it.
So just looking for clarification, this is the intent, let staff be directed to apply all the available tools in the official plan. For affordable housing and that staff be directed to consider additional tools that can be incorporated into official plan amendment eleven.
Yes, I think that captures that.
Okay. So. Right. It's an amendment. So is there any discussion on the amendment, councillor Mackey?
Thanks, Mister Warden. I'd. Just like to hear from our director of planning, whether there's any unforeseen implications in supporting something like this that council may not be aware of.
Sure, through you, Mister Warden. Thank you for your your question, councillor Mackey. I i in this case, you know, staff do do apply the tools within our official plan. There can be some differing interpretations of of those tools, but staff are happy to continue those discussions with developers and with the community. About about the tools with respect to official plan amendment number eleven. We have had a public meeting on that already. We are looking at some further changes to official plan amendment number eleven. Depending on the extent of those changes, it could it could drive further public process or for the public meeting. But there are some changes we're already proposing that would look to further clarify some of the tools in that regard. So it, you know, in this case. Speaking on behalf of staff, we're we're happy to receive direction to to continue. Looking for those tools and and to continue to apply the official plan. But I would note that in some cases, there can be differing interpretations of of what the tools available are or or what the policies of the official plan amendment. Say and and in some cases, as I said, there's there's the shall statements versus the that would like to have statements, but we're happy to. Explore that further with with our our partners at municipalities and and with with council.
Thank you, Randy.
And I don't know if it's just maybe the wording of the motion, but just just to clarify in in terms of. You know, staff's role, I guess, in the process is is. No doubt, county council has approved the official plan. We apply those those policies and tools. For for every development application that comes comes forward to us. But at the end of the day, it's 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 council's making the decisions, it's approving proving those. We provide a staff report in terms of how as staff we feel those recommendations we're making to council. Conform to the official plan and the provincial policy statement and everything else. But at the end of the day, in terms of. Directing staff to apply all the available tools, we. We we can apply them in terms of our our discussions and conversations and through our review of those documents. But at the end of the day, we can't apply them as a as a result from an approval, because those, of course, rest with with council.
Thank you, councillor Mackey. Anything further? Okay. Any other hands I see? So. The councillor Woodbury.
So if I get this right. This appears to me to be a motion. To tell staff to do. What they're already doing. And. To consider it. To incorporate into O P A, which is a process already in place. And and. I have a real hard time. Supporting a motion. That. Doesn't. Necessarily change things from what we're doing. The the wording of all. Tools. Then now would open up the debate of do all tools get used at all the times and things like that? And from what I've heard. Staff is doing this. And and if we do this for. Planning, then I think we should be looking at doing this for every department, saying that they should follow the rules that are set out for them. So I will not be supporting this.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Councillor, so ever.
Yes, and I'm sure that, you know, staff do a good job on a lot of things. But in the reports that we received on plans and subdivisions. It, the words affordable and attainable often don't appear at all. Yet, as I pointed out earlier. But, you know, there's a number of places here where the developer is gonna will need to consider and prepare to justify. Well, I'd like to know as a council member that. The developer has justified. Also, under four one. As housing policy under residential in intensification under section seven, it says that. The strategic approach to intensification. Needs to retain small town character and revitalize downtown areas through. And number seven says sharing. The development checklist created in partnership with the Great Lakes Health Unit and developers, etc. And one of the items in that checklist is the including a variety of affordable housing options, so. And then it says developers will be asked to consider the checklist as part of the application process. County planning staff will review the information provided and recommend any changes. So. I haven't seen this in any of the reports that they've been shared this checklist, what their response was to the checklist. And then what the. Um, and then what the response of county planning staff was. So I'm not saying that, you know, there there's anything wrong with what they're doing. Our planning staff probably, well, there's one of the reports that can be required in Blue Mountains is an affordable housing report, but we haven't seen any of those. So I'm just, it's just kind of, I guess, it's our oversight role to make sure that all of the I's are dotted and the T's are crossed. And this is, my motion is just really reminding that, you know, we should be following our own policies and, you know, I think it is required because we haven't seen reference to affordable housing or attainable housing in uh plan of subdivision information reports.
Okay, thank you. I believe that uh we've had. Who am I missing? Oh, Scott, my apologies.
So sorry, Mr. Warden, I'll keep this brief through you. Uh, with respect to councillor, so ever's comments about the healthy development checklist. Yes, we do regularly share this with developers and and the way it works is we would have a pre-submission consultation meeting with the developers and and quite often that would be a meeting between the member municipal staff and the county staff and and sometimes any other agency staff like the Conservation Authority. Uh, and then coming out of that meeting, we would share direction with the developer and and usually that's in the form of a letter or an email uh where it's it's providing some feedback on the early concepts for the development and and providing them some guidance on on what they need to consider. And and so that healthy uh development checklist is is right on our county official plan web county, um, sorry, our county website alongside our application forms and a number of other technical guides. So our direction to developers is that they consider these documents as as they're undertaking the design of the subdivision and as they're undertaking the completion of their technical studies and and things like the the um healthy development checklist speak to, you know, uh connected roads and everything else. So it's quite common that we'll see a a development proposal come in with a series of cul-de-sacs and and we'll say, listen, we really don't love the cul-de-sacs, we we prefer through roads, can you go back for for a redesign? So not all of that information, including some of the 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 direction given on affordable housing uh makes it makes its way back to council in in terms of, you know, trying to keep our reports somewhat brief. Um, but that those are conversations that are happening, you know, right from the time the developer is looking to buy the land all the way through the the development application process. And and so I apologize for the confusion on this matter and and we can look at changes to our reports to 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 further highlight some of this. Um, but I assure you that those discussions are happening on a regular basis.
Uh, thank you for that. Um, may, you know, maybe it's just a function of that we we don't see it in the reports and the act does say that council has to consider it. So um, that's all I'm trying to get through this uh amendment.
So given what you've just said, is your emotion still in order or?
Yes.
It is. Okay, then it's perhaps time to call the question on the motion before us, the motion to amend. Everyone understands? We're voting on the motion to amend. All those in favor? Recorded both. Okay, turn it over to Madam Clerk.
Councillor Mackey?
Can we start with flesh critic?
In the order of roll. Councillor Gamble? Councillor Burley?
Oh.
Councillor Carlton? Councillor McQueen?
Support.
Sorry, can you repeat that? Support.
Yeah.
Councillor Patterson? Councillor Columbus? Sorry, Warden Hicks?
Nay.
Councillor Columbus? Councillor Columbus is opposed. Councillor Keating?
Opposed.
Councillor Keating is opposed. Councillor Thomas? Councillor Thomas is opposed. Councillor O'Leary? Councillor O'Leary is opposed. Councillor Woodbury?
Oh.
Councillor Woodbury is opposed. Councillor Milne?
Nay.
Councillor Milne is opposed. Councillor, whoever?
In favor.
Councillor, whoever is in favor. Councillor Borning Young?
In favor.
Councillor Borning Young is in favor. Councillor Robinson?
Opposed.
Councillor Robinson is opposed and Councillor Hutchinson, I confirm, has left the meeting. That was, the motion has lost sixty-two eighteen.
Great, there we go. Thank you. So, okay, now we're back on the main uh motion. Right? Which was to receive the report, to share it with our member municipalities and to have that the the contents of that report inform uh the delegation that we hope to make it AMO. Uh, so all those in favor? Is there anyone opposed? That is carried. Thank you very much, uh Scott. So we are now at the quarter past one. I'm gonna suggest that we break for lunch and come back at two. Sure. All right. We'll see you back at two. I'm good to go. Okay, thank you. Good afternoon and welcome back, everyone. Are we all together online as well? Welcome back. Okay, we are now dealing with item five D, which is the Hutton OPA number fourteen. Uh, that puts Becky on deck and I need a mover and seconder to put the item on the floor. Moved by councillor Gamble. And who does whose hand did I say? Seconded by councillor Milne. Becky, you have the floor.
So just very briefly, uh, Warden Hicks and members of council, I want to take this opportunity to introduce uh or reintroduce Becky Hillier to to uh council. Uh, Becky's been with us for just over a year now, but just uh within the past uh few weeks, she's been made our our new intermediate planner. And so we're thrilled to have Becky on board and and this is her first formal presentation in front of council. Uh, so we wanted to just make this brief introduction. She's been doing wonderful work on a variety of projects and has been supporting some of the task force and committees as well as official plan member number eleven. So I'm sure you're going to like uh dealing with Becky here.
Welcome on board, Becky. And we're a friendly crowd, crowd.
There we go. Thank you so much uh to Scott and uh to all of my colleagues and uh to everyone here today. Um, I'm looking forward to working with all of you and it's nice to see you face to face today. Uh, so I'm I'm in for a double whammy today, but I'm gonna start with uh um a proposed county official plan amendment, uh which is just an overview to the addendum to report PDR dash CW sixteen twenty-two uh regarding a official plan amendment application that's been received uh in the township of Georgian Bluffs. Uh, so just to give a sort of brief background on this application, uh it was submitted by two seven six five seven four Ontario Inc. Uh, which is locally known as the Hudson Landscaping Company, which some of you might be familiar with. Uh, it's an existing company located in Georgian Bluffs. Um, Christine Loft is the uh agent acting on this application. Um, and it's my understanding that in uh twenty nineteen, um, there was some pre-consultation engagement um with county staff at that point. Um, the Hudson uh landscaping business was looking to expand their current um build, uh their current uh practice on their um existing site. Uh, and my understanding is that site was um is is designated agricultural in the county's official plan. Um, and it was um suggested by staff that um perhaps expanding the business to the scale that they were looking for uh would not be appropriate to uh an agricultural property. And it was recommended that um if they were looking to um to uh expand the the size of of their practice um that they look to seeking a different uh property. And so uh the the application that we have today um is a result of them finding a a property that they have felt is appropriate. Uh, and they have been working with staff to just put the um the uh policies in place to to move forward with uh de- uh designating the lands as what we call space extensive uh commercial and industrial with a site-specific designation uh on the property. Um, so just uh to give a sense of what the property is like, it's about twenty point two hectares in size. It's currently designated rural and provincially significant wetlands. Uh, the scale of the proposed use, uh according to staff, is just seems to be a bit too large to be accommodated within the current rural designation. Um, and what they've proposed is two main buildings, which would include an office and sales building uh as well as a shop for servicing vehicles and equipment. Uh, they also have parking facilities, plant housing structures, outdoor storage for like landscaping supplies, uh site landscaping throughout and a stormwater management pond. Uh, and along with the county official plan amendment, a zoning bylaw uh amendment application and a site plan application have been submitted to the township of Georgian Bluffs. And just to note, a public meeting was held concurrently with uh the township of Georgian Bluffs as well. Uh, to give you a sense of where the property is located, it's about two hundred and fifty meters south of the secondary settlement area of Spring Mount uh with frontage on Gray Road eighteen. Uh, surrounding land uses include uh the Coca-Cola facility just immediately north of the property um as well as the the Georgian Bluffs Township Office, just two properties north. Uh, there's also a contractor's yard just across the the road from it and some existing uh agricultural and rural residential properties. Um, so as mentioned, uh, the property is currently designated rural, which is the white that you see here as well as about two-thirds provincially significant wetlands. Um, it's surrounded by uh areas that are also designated rural and wetlands. Uh, there's some nearby hazard lands. This orange area up up here is the settlement area of Spring Mount. Uh, and the gray area over here is uh the NEC lands. Uh, so a nice thing about this application that we don't always see at the official plan stage is we we were able to receive some architectural drawings. Uh, so this is the proposed office and sales space. Uh, and it's about four hundred and eighty-nine square meters in area. Uh, and this is sort of what you would see from from the road driving by. Um, and this is the proposed shop, uh which would be situated behind uh that main building. Um, and it would be used to service some of the the vehicles for the for the business. Uh, so there are a number of uh official plan policies that uh staff have uh really done an analysis on uh while looking at this application. Um, there's uh areas of significant wetlands, uh core areas, uh as well as the uh woodlands throughout the property. Uh, as a result, an environmental impact study was uh completed uh through through this application. Um, it really didn't find any significant issues. It recommended that a um sort of tree buffer layer be planted between the proposed use and the wetlands. Um, there also was some karst mapping on the property. I've learned a lot about karst lately. Um, I'm not sure if the uh if if every everyone on the committee is aware, but it's essentially a uh topographic constraint that involves potential fractures in the bedrock uh which could create structural stability for some buildings um or potential contamination of the water supply depending on the the severity of the that karst. And so a car study was done, it didn't find, uh, there were a number of test tools done that didn't find evidence of any karst. Uh, there was some potential karst identified in sort of the the top uh corner of the development area. Uh, but there's only a proposed parking lot there. And so that the the report recommended that at the time of uh construction, that a consultant would review that area for for potential uh karst concerns. Um, there was also a a layer of bedrock on the property and a bedrock letter of opinion uh essentially concluded that um due to the potential for the high water table there um in combination with, you know, quite a small area outside of the the significant wetlands that would actually be you could actually do some sort of um extraction of the bedrock that probably it would not be a particularly viable opportunity there for that extraction. Uh, there was also a letter of opinion done about the feasibility of private servicing. And one thing that's really important to note with this application and that has been a big consideration in in making our recommendation here is that the proposed use is not really something that would uh take up a lot of servicing uh intensity. Um, so it's, it would be proposed on a septic system um as well as a well, a well water supply. And the letter of opinion um basically concluded that the the use could be well serviced with with private servicing. Um, a stormwater management report uh and study was done. Uh, that report indicated that a stormwater management uh pond would be required and um some of that water would uh be sort of filtered to a a higher um filtration level before sort of seeping out uh into the wetlands or surrounding areas. Um, and the nice thing about that as well is um they could also make use of that stormwater management pond for watering some of their nursery crop as well. And then, of course, a planning justification report was prepared by Christine Loft. Um, so the the site specific, site-specific space extensive designation is proposed on the property, which would permit the following uses. Uh, so the landscaping business and the ancillary uses uh agricultural bulk sales, equipment sales and rental, farm machinery, sales and service, agricultural produce or livestock terminal, terminal, feed mill or grain elevator and horticultural nurseries. Um, and so this is quite a tailored list from what would sort of be be um permitted by default in the space extensive category. Uh, so we have uh gotten rid of uses, including automobile and RV sales, fuel distribution, warehousing and manufacturing uh in order to limit the list of potential future uses uh to those that may directly benefit the surrounding rural and agricultural community and which should have less impact on ecological features of the site. Uh, so and just just to reiterate here, just so we're clear, um, these uses are not being proposed by the proponent at this time, but um in the event if this business or use ever stopped, then these could be the the feasible uses that could be considered in future. Uh, so the the uh, this is a list of the comments that were received uh regarding this application. Um, I would note that we did not, we we did do the mail out to all um surrounding members of the public, um and no comments were received. Uh, there are also no members of public in attendance at the public meeting that was held. Uh, historic sogging matey indicated no concerns. Uh, Gray Sobel indicated that they were generally satisfied with the findings of the environmental impact study. Um, and, you know, provided that the conditions of the karst assessment, assessment and EIS were taken into consideration at a site plan phase, they they had no concern. Uh, Gray County Transportation indicated a commercial entrance permit and sign permit would be required. Uh, the township of Georgian Bluffs building staff were satisfied with the letter of opinion on servicing. Uh, the local risk management official was circulated and indicated no uh no comments or concerns. And and Bridge Gas noted that service lines may run in the area and advised contact prior to construction. Uh, the city of Owen Sound did uh provide some fairly substantial comments. Uh, they requested clarification on how the proposal uh would support healthy, livable and safe communities that fit within rural landscape. They questioned whether the use would be better located within a service settlement area and questioned whether the situation of the proposed landscaping business uh could have implications for future expansion of the uh secondary settlement area of Spring Mount. Um, and certainly, uh, these were uh questions that um staff, you know, had also considered in regards to this application. And we did put the city's comments back to Christine Loft, who um provided quite a comprehensive response. Uh, in summary, uh, due to the requirement for the larger scale outdoor storage in combination with the need for high, easy highway access, uh minimum demand on servicing and the appropriate lands to grow nursery plants. Uh, staffer of the general opinion that the proposed use is appropriate for rural lands as described in the provincial policy statement. Uh, regarding the city's uh comments. Regarding the city's comments around the implications for the potential expansion of the surrounding settlement areas. Staff would not acknowledge that there certainly is some merit in this comment. At the same time, the building coverage of the site is quite minimal. The proposed use is not out of scale or character with the surrounding land uses. Which again do include that contractor's yard, the Coca-Cola facility and the township offices. And the site specific nature of the proposed land use redesignation. Recommends restriction on a number of other industrial commercial uses that could potentially impact those lands. So just a few concluding remarks. So the space extensive commercial and industrial designation is not in an official plan amendment that we see proposed very regularly. But again, in this case, given the higher space demands for outdoor storage. In combination with the need for highway access for those landscaping vehicles. And the low servicing requirements of the business, we see that the proposed landscaping business used as appropriate for the rural lands. And that's all I have, but I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much, Becky. Counsel, I'm looking to you, if I could see the other counselors as well, yeah, that's great, there you are. Is there any question or comment? That's the impact of lunch. All right. Oh, yes, so there is one small amendment. Counsel, I should draw your attention to, it talks about the redesignation of six point eight three hectares of rural lands. If that could be amended to to read redesignation of approximately six hectares of rural lands. That friendly enough? Okay, so I'm gonna call the question on the motion before you. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? That's Carrie, thank you very much, and you can stand. Stand in place because you're up next as well, we're dealing with item. We are dealing with item five E. The appeal. So we won't, because there are options, we won't call for the item to be put on the floor, we want to, first of all, here. From Becky. Are we hearing from Becky an open session first or? Okay, so what you haven't heard, that's been whispered into my ears, that we'll hear from Becky first in open session. There are some options to be considered. After Becky's presentation, it may be appropriate for us to go in camera to receive. Some legal advice, but we'll start off first of all with your presentation, Becky.
Great, thank you so much. Yes, so on that note, I'm just going to provide a bit of a planning analysis that was. Done regarding a proposed appeal of consent BO three dash twenty twenty two in the town of Blue Mountains. So just a quick summary of of that report. So on May eighteenth, twenty twenty two, the town of Blue Mountains Committee of Adjustment. Granted provisional approval for consent application BO three dash twenty twenty two. To permit a lot addition on the subject property which fronts on Gray Road one thirteen. Of which is locally known as Alfred Street West in that portion of town. It's located within the primary settlement area of Thornbury. On May sixteenth, county staff, as is sort of our regular routine. Submitted comments requesting standard road widening on the severed and retained portions of that property. Which again is a standard practice for consent applications on county road. The Towns Committee of Adjustment proceeded to approve the application without county's road widening request. And it should be noted that staff have no concerns with the nature of the proposed lot addition. But rather with the potential precedent that could be established. Should that road widening condition be waived through this application? So in summary, staff have submitted a placeholder appeal to the town. As the last day of appeal was June ninth, prior to receipt of further direction by this committee. So just to give a sense of where this property is located. The lands are legally described as part of Park Lot thirteen. On the northeast side of Alfred Street, Plan Thornbury being part one of Plan sixteen R dash nine two one zero, if that rings a bell. It's in the primary settlement area of Thornbury, immediately adjacent to lands locally known as one fifty four Alfred Street West. So this 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 property here is one fifty four Alfred Street West. The subject property is currently vacant, it's approximately four thousand four hundred square meters in size. And the neighboring property that was received the lot addition, again, that's one fifty four Alfred. It contains a single residential dwelling and it is one thousand six hundred and thirty square meters. The subject property again has a frontage on Alfred Street West, which is also County Road one thirteen. The surrounding lands are predominantly residential in nature, we have some medium residential. Over here in this general vicinity, we've got some lower Duncy residential around here and some vacant lands up to the north. There's also a water course that moves around the property and and some hazard lands there as well. So just to give a better sense of of what this application is is looking to do to achieve. So again, this this blue property here, that is the lot that would receive or benefit from the lot addition. The property in orange is the subject property that we're discussing today. And this sort of dotted line here is what they're proposing to add to this blue lot. So as you can see, the the parking. Facilities for the house are currently on the adjacent property. Both properties are owned by the same owner and they are essentially just proposing to change their lot line. In order to accommodate that parking on the same property as the house. So the county has required, has requested road widening on the retained and severed portion. So that that requested widening is noted in red there. And I would note that it would it would only be requested on these two portions. And would not include the portion that currently has the dwelling. So the purpose of road widening and again, it's it's it's. It's a bit of a confusing misnomer to some extent and certainly I, as a newer newer planner, I I had some. My own sort of idea of what that would entail, so I I do empathize that it can be a bit of a confusing concept. Most frequently, the widening is not used to expand the road itself. But rather to give additional flexibility to site utilities within the road allowance, but not under the traveled portion of the road. So the goal is to strategically acquire lands where they're available. For future upgrading of the potentially of the paved road area of the shoulders of the road, potentially the sidewalks. And to install services such as internet cables, drainage ditches, etc. It's a very common request through Planning Act applications involving lands on county roads, which include consents. Site plan applications, plans of subdivisions and condominiums. When road widening is required for projects where the lands have not been acquired. The county is required to pay for these lands, whereas through this process, the county is is not required to pay. So just to be upfront, I would note that the 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 comments that were provided to the town. Did have, did create some confusion during the Committee of Adjustment meeting. So they essentially read, no objection to severance, road widening of seventeen feet or five point one eight two meters is required on the retained and severed parcels. The proposed widening may or may not come into conflict with an existing porch on the front of the structure. If it does, the line may deviate around said structure. So as I have sort of indicated in in the previous slide here. The the widening is actually not being requested on that portion of the property at all or of of the neighboring property with the dwelling. It would only be restricted to the retained and severed portions of the of the lot that would provide the lot addition. As that is only what is within our jurisdiction within the Planning Act. So again, just just to kind of reiterate the different sections of the Planning Act that you give. The county that that sort of authority to request road widening. So section fifty three twelve does empower committees of adjustment to make a decision on a consent, including with conditions. Section fifty three twelve point one notes that these powers extend to both the severed and retained portions of the property undergoing the consent. In section fifteen, sorry, fifty one twenty five C. Grants specific power to request dedication of lands beside major roadways as conditions of subdivisions and therefore consents. So it's my understanding through the Planning Act that consents are sort of mini subdivisions and and in that way they have a lot of the same. Rights as as subdivisions. So through the provincial policy statement, there's general direction for the coordination of infrastructure and. Growth planning between upper and lower tier governments. And section one point six point seven calls for transportation systems that are safe and appropriate to address projected needs. So again, the county really sees attaining these these road widenings. Where we can as as a really important best practice for just making sure we can do that road upgrading in future if and when it is necessary to do so. So beyond that, our county official plan does have very specific policy language about where. We can and cannot request that widening and to what extent we can request. So County one thirteen is known as a local county road, there's different types of county roads. Within appendix D of the county's official plan. Section eight point three point two sub three B notes that county local roads should generally be thirty meters in width, so that's sort of the. Ideal situation for those local roads. In this case, that local road was only about twenty meters currently. And so section eight point three point two three D states. Where county road right of way widths are less than those described above, so thirty meters. The county will require as a condition of approval through a consent plan of subdivision. Or site plan application, the dedication of lands for road widening purposes at no expense to the county. So again, we're we're really just using our our policy here that we regularly make use of in in order to. Acquire, submit a request to acquire those lands. I would note that there is some a little bit of different language within the town of Blue Mountains official plan. So it notes the following works facilities and other phasing requirements. Shall be addressed as conditions of draft plan of subdivision, condominium or site plan approval. So road improvements in accordance with the requirements of the applicable road authority. Including road widening, turning lanes, traffic signals and external roads improvements. So I'm I'm pulling this up as we can see, it doesn't specifically mention consents. But again, just because of that wording within the Planning Act. We have sort of considered that subdivisions and consents have have a lot of the same sort of. Objectives within the Planning Act. So the town of Blue Mountains official plan. I just thought that this was a bit of an important piece to include. Just to note that, you know, it's it is a county road, but it's certainly within the best interest of the town as well to. Try to acquire these lands, so that the subject property is located, sorry, where this red star is here. On these gray lands, which is a future secondary plan area. As opposed to these like yellow lands over here, which is the built sort of urban fabric at the moment, called the community living area. So both within the county official plan, this whole area is is designated primary settlement area and. Obviously, within the towns plan as well, that is an intended area of urban growth, so even though this road here. You know, maybe doesn't have a lot of traffic at the moment. The potential growth opportunities in this area and the potential upgrading of that road will likely become quite quite important in future. So we did receive some comments from the owner of the the two properties. And he couldn't be here today, so I just thought it was important to share some some of his thoughts. Within the email that he sent, and I believe that his email is linked within the staff report, so I would encourage you to read it in full. But the owner Jerry McGregor provided formal comments to the county outlining the following. General surprise and disappointment about the county's road widening request. He noted that the county's request was not included within the town staff recommendation report. He recognized that it is standard practice for the county to acquired lands for widening purposes. But upsetting that this can be done without compensation. He had general concerns regarding the logic of the decision, noting that it may not. That it is not the intention of the application to create a new lot. And a suggestion that there may be further issues arising from further road widening. Including concerns about widening being so close to his house, relocation of hydro poles that may be required. Culvert drainage system would need to be addressed. Suggestion that servicing would not be able to cross the nearby bridge. The implication of widening on neighboring homes. And essentially concluded the email with recommendation that county council not approve the appeal to the Ontario Land Tribunal. So in summary, we're just, we're seeking a direction from the committee. To both sort of receive this report. As well as to direct staff on whether or not we should be pursuing the appeal of this consent application. Or whether we should withdraw the application. Or sorry, the the the, yeah, the consent appeal application. So that's everything I have there, but I'm happy to take any questions.
Okay, so thank you very much for the presentation, Becky. Peter, I do see your hand, and before I go to you though. Peter, so councillor Boardignan. I do see your hand. It may be. Right now, we're going to be debating about whether we want to give instructions to commence with the appeal. Or not, and to do that properly, we may want to have some legal advice. So with your leave, I'm going to suggest that maybe we do. Go in closed session, councillor Boardignan, was your question? Something that could be addressed in clothes or or is it something that could go in open?
Through your warden, depending on the direction of the conversation, so it may maybe best that we take it into closed for now.
Okay. Council Woodbury.
Yeah, I just then, if we do take this into clothes, I I just like some advice. On if how it's what's happened, I guess, maybe either in the past or what the procedure is. When one of the municipalities is going to possibly be on the other end. Of we're going to be on opposing sides. Is everybody allowed in or not, and I just don't know, so that's that's my question.
Thank you, councillor Woodbury. I don't know if it's appropriate to get legal advice on that, but it's certainly one of those things that we have to consider. When we're considering a potential for conflict of interest or pecuniary interest. The ultimate declaration is the personal persons, meaning the person with the potential for conflict of interest. But you raise an issue as well with respect to what is the interest of the county? If someone potentially on the opposite side of our position is privy. To our strategy, is it's privy to our legal advice? I think that's a legitimate thing for us to discuss, any comments from anyone around the table? Counselors, whoever.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden, and I would point out that our oath of office here and when we are at county. We are strictly wearing our county hat and what's good for the county. And when we're at the local level, then we are wearing our local hat and I think all members should remember that and. So therefore, you know, I think it is difficult to switch hats. But you know, that's the position we're put in. And we have to just acknowledge that whatever is in closed session here is confidential to the county. And cannot be shared at the local level or used in any manner and. That is what we swore our oath to do is when we're here, we're county members and. We have to leave our local hats at the door and so I don't have a problem doing that and you know. Thank you.
That's a point well made, councillor, so ever, I do recall. When we were dealing with the indigenous land settlement. Matter that we had a municipality that was also involved in, and I think they chose to excuse themselves. At certain points. But the point is well taken by councillors, so ever, that it is a personal decision, but it's just good for us to bring our minds. You know, our minds to that. I know the judges all the time have to hear evidence and then they decide, well, I'm not going to give it any weight, but you've heard it kind of thing. But judges are good at that sort of thing. And I suppose that councillors have to get good at at what councillor, so ever is saying, which is to recognize that right now I'm wearing a county hat and I'm here with the best interest of the county in mind. And then next week I may be in a different in a different position. Okay, anything further on on that? Councillor Boardignan, you've got your hand up.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. Through you. I believe my question actually could just be answered in open session because it doesn't have to do with any of the legal. I was just just going to ask. You know, I don't know if planners know this road, but you know, there's hydro poles and the ditches and things like that. So I guess my question is, is there a plan in the short or long range for this particular road at this time? Outside of outside of this particular instance, just on one thirteen.
Sorry, Pat.
Yeah, thank you. Through you, Mr. Warden. There's no plans for any expansion or anything. I don't think you could say it much better than I've said in the presentation. It really, the road widening is a funny name. But there is, I mean, our last count is about seventeen hundred cars in that area, so it is busy. There's developments going on around. There's roads. You know, I think Albert Street is right across the road. Maybe a left turn lane would come along the line somewhere. So I mean, it's just one of those opportunities that we would never pass up. So.
Very good councillor Boardignan. Okay. All right. So now I councillor, so ever.
Yes, and I think planning staff have made it quite clear. And I think wearing my county hat. This is an opportunity to acquire land that the county may have to acquire in the future. So I don't see that we have much choice here. You know, it's, I think it's the wise thing to do because you know, the only thing I worry about, but I can't really worry about it because I think the policies are quite clear is that we don't have a county transportation master plan that's been passed and road decisions on road swapping have been you know, deferred since twenty sixteen, I guess. One of the issues that comes up with this road is is it going to remain a county road? And because it does go through a settlement area and it does hook up to downtown or in the future is there going to be a bypass? But unfortunately, we will be considering that as part of the town master transportation plan. But it's not in the county plan and at this point. So I don't think we can even consider, well, it might be or it might not be or whatever. I think we have to protect the interest of the county and say we should acquire any land, not knowing what the future of the road is. We should acquire it because even if it's not a county road and it gets swapped eventually. You know, as the staff have pointed out, there's active transportation considerations. This road will be a link to our new campus of care and development out in that part of town. So people from there will want to access the downtown. And if they want to use active transportation, they will need sidewalks and or trails and everything. So but you know, that's all speculation. So I think all we need to do is look at the rules and say, you know, our policy tells us to protect the county and acquire whatever land we can along roads that may may or may not in the future be, you know, whatever the use is in the future. We don't know that at this point because we don't have an official transportation plan that's been passed. But we we do need, we will need to buy that land potentially in the future. So if we can get it right now, I I'm I'm in favor of option number one. I think it is. Almost got it back.
Sorry, I I'm surprised that you say option number one, given your comments. Your comments all lead me to option number two. Sorry, no, you're right. You're right. To pursue the appeal. No, option number one. Okay. So with with that said, I I recognize that you're making a motion for option number one, and it's gathering that you're suggesting option number one without the need to go into a closed session. You're feeling comfortable that we can proceed with voting on option number one without the legal advice.
Yes, I think the presentation from planning staff made it quite clear what the policies are. And if we're to follow the policies, then we would have no choice.
Thank you very much. I'm looking for a second or for that proposal around option number one. Seconder councillor Woodbury. Okay, any debate or comments on the motion before us to direct staff to pursue the appeal? Councillor, your brief indulgence, I need to speak with our council just very, very quickly, if you don't mind. Sorry, everyone, and thank you for that indulgence. I did have a chance to speak with our legal counsel. He is suggesting that we go into a closed session very briefly. Because he would like to give us some information that is not appropriate be given in open session. So moved by councillor Mel, seconded by councillor Leary. That we're going to close session for the purposes of receiving legal advice. When we come back out in session. Yes. Well, don't we come back out and continue with that? Okay, all right. All those in favor? Oh, sorry, councillor, so ever. Oh, no, it's my fault, my fault.
Yes, just to confirm, we're only voting to go into closed session on this matter at this point. Thank you.
Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? That's carried. We'll just take a brief second to clear the room. And we won't be very long to the media. And we do have to use the microphones because we have. Thank you very much. It's now two forty eight and or two forty nine. And we're back in open session. I make a declaration that we discussed only the items requiring us to get solicitor advice and nothing else. So before we went into closed session, we were, we had moved and seconded on item five E, option number one, and we were about to vote on option number one. So unless there's any further discussion on that, I will call the question. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of option number one? Is there anyone opposed? That is carried. Thank you very much. So watch how this works. Item number six takes us back into closed session. Is it appropriate that we deal with A and B? You know, the two pulled items, so we're going to closed session. Perhaps just to be assistive to the media particularly, perhaps we can deal with the other two items that were pulled and deal with those in open session before we go back into closed session. So item four A, first of all, was the development charges reserve fund statement. And I'll need a mover to, I think councillor, so ever, you had asked it to be pulled. Would you move it, please? So moved by councillor, so ever, and seconded by councillor or deputy warden McQueen. Okay, so councillor, so ever.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. Um, yes, I I pulled the item A, the development charges reserve fund statement. You know, just like to recognize the fact that a lot of the development in Gray County is happening in the Blue Mountains. And and certainly the report is very good at identifying where the sources of the DCs are coming from. I'm just wondering whether we could see a similar table for the spend so that we actually know that, as we all know, development charges are meant to service the areas of growth. And that's why, you know, when they're collected, they come from areas of growth. And then they, you know, they should be, you would think there would be a correlation be between where they're collected and where they're spent because that's where the growth is happening. So I'm just wondering if there could be a similar table for the spend as well as the growth for those years.
Through you, Mr. Warden. I I would like to point to council to the development charges background study as really the authoritative document with regard to the projects that are intended to be completed that really provide the basis for the collection of those development charges. We certainly could prepare a table that described how that spend was progressing. But it is the development charges background study that identifies the projects and provides the basis for the collection of the DCs.
Thank you for that. I recognize that, yes.
Okay, anyone else? What am I missing, councillor Burley?
Oh, Mary Lou. Mary Lou's on the screen.
Oh, oh. Thank you, Mary Lou.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. There is a link in the report. See if I can share. Whether you can see this or not. It does show the spending all the way back to twenty seventeen on various projects. So in twenty twenty one, for example, here's the list of projects that DCs were used for. Might be helpful in the future if we put it within the body of the report in a table. Whoops. I'm talking and apparently.
Yeah, I think it was the fourth attachment.
Yes. There we go. Whether you can see my screen?
No, you 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 won't be able to share screen. My understanding is you won't be able to share screen. But councillors do have the link and they are able to individually go to that fourth link if they want to. Is there anything specific that you wanted to speak to in that link?
Only to the fact that we have a number of projects. So in twenty seventeen to twenty twenty one, there was over seven point five million dollars in development charges used for a number of projects.
Okay, thank you. Anything further, councillor, so ever?
No, 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 no. Thanks for that. I'm sorry I missed that. There's a lot of attachments.
Very good. Thank you very much. I think it's time to call the question on receiving this report. All those in favor? Any opposed? That is carried. Thank you. So next we're going to deal with item four D, which is the town of Blue Mountains correspondence about the inclusion of mailing addresses of voters on the voters' list. Take a mover and a second or move by councillor, so ever, seconded by councillor Boardignan. Councillor, so ever, you have the floor.
Yes, this is a a motion we passed at the Blue Mountains Council. Last election, there was an issue in Blue Mountains about the lack of inclusion of mailing addresses for voters on the voters' list and last election, forty nine percent, according to the census of the residences in the Blue Mountains, were occupied by not their regular residents, so seasonal or otherwise. So you know, it becomes a huge problem for candidates when they are trying to reach those voters. I mean, the voters that get their mail in the municipality, they're easy to reach. You can just send out a flyer as a flyer as junk mail, I guess, is what it's called. You go to the post office and you you send it out. And everybody who receives flyers in the mail gets it. It's not so easy to reach voters that are have their primary address outside the municipality. In our case, that's come down from forty nine percent to forty one percent in this election. But you know, our council became aware that there are municipalities where the clerk refuses to provide the mailing addresses to candidates, thereby disenfranchising a lot of voters, basically making it impossible for candidates to deliver information to the voters. It's not a problem in the Blue Mountains anymore, but it is a problem in some other municipalities. So we decided we pass a motion requesting that other municipalities support this. We we did talk to the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing. We, they didn't give us a real strong answer. They said they don't provide legal advice. So the problem right now, as I see it, is we have different rules in different parts of the province. Some, and it's really up to the individual clerks. So what we're suggesting is municipalities give us support to this concept that all voters should be able to access the voter information of the candidate information and put everybody on unequal footing, that all taxpayers in the municipality, you know, be able to be accessed by the candidates. So we did ask in our letter for support. And so I noticed that the recommendation merely says be received for information. So I'd like to introduce an amendment that just to add the words in council supports the the correspondence. Thank you.
Madam Cao.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I think staff's rationale for the for information designation around this piece of correspondence was that at the upper tier, we are not responsible for elections in in any way other than trying to support candidate information. So we felt it most appropriate that you had this to take up with for discussion in your own home. So we felt it most appropriate that you had this to take up with for discussion in your own home municipalities. But it's not something that the county is involved in.
Mr. Warden, I did attend a candidate information session that was organized by the county. So I think the county has involved itself in the elections. Thank you.
To you, Mr. Warden. I think that is what I said was that the county wants to support candidates and support information sharing.
Anything else from anyone? Do you still want to put that motion forward, Counselor, so ever? Okay, then I need a seconder, please. Seconded by Counsel Board Ignan. Did I see your hand, sir? Yes, okay. All right. So we now have the amendment on the floor. Counsel Woodbury.
I think I pushed the button more today than I have the whole time. You know what? It's real nice to make things easier for candidates. If I own a piece of property, well, forget it, even owning the piece of property. I am not in favor of my name and my number or address being on anything that I don't choose. And I think that, that if some, if a municipality wants to have a list of people that are willing to put their names and given out to the candidates, I think that's a wonderful thing. But I think anyone that gives out my name and number with my, without my express opinion, I'm not in favor of. I get enough junk mail. So you know, I like the sentiment. But I think if we're thinking of candidates here running and not the general public and what they need, I think we're heading the wrong direction. And that's just my opinion.
Counselor, so ever?
Yes, and we had that discussion last election at the Blue Mountains. But the fact is that the voters list, or at least the huge majority of it, is generated from the tax rolls, which are public documents which are available for inspection at any town hall. So, and there are very strict rules about how candidates can use the voters list. So this is not increasing the exposure of any private information to the general public. It's very restricted to the candidates who, if, and I did suggest maybe that would be the case in the Blue Mountains last time, who if they brought in about ten people into the town hall and each took a book of the tax rolls, could compile a list from the tax rolls. You're not allowed to photograph them, but there's nothing to prevent a person from opening the book and writing down all the information in the book, which includes the mailing address. So it doesn't really expose personal information to any more than would be available if people made the effort. I just, at the time when we managed to get the decision, a more favorable decision by the clerk in the Blue Mountains, you know, we did have that discussion and really, you know, that was her original argument as well. But, you know, the fact is, the information is available at every town hall for anybody to go and look at. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, then it's time to call the question on the motion to amend. All those in favor? All those, any?
Mr. Warden, I think you know what I'm going to say. I'd like to record a vote.
Madam Clerk?
Okay, so this recorded vote, excuse me, is on the amendment to support the town of Blue Mountains correspondence. Counselor Gamble? Counselor Gamble is opposed. Counselor Burley? Counselor Burley is opposed. Counselor Carlton has left. Counselor McQueen?
Support.
Counselor McQueen is in favor. Counselor Patterson? Counselor Patterson is opposed. Warden Hicks?
Nay.
Warden Hicks is opposed. Counselor Columbus? Counselor Columbus is opposed. Counselor Keveney?
Opposed.
Counselor Keveney is opposed. Counselor Thomas? Counselor Thomas is opposed. Counselor O'Leary? Counselor O'Leary is opposed. Counselor Woodbury? Counselor Woodbury is opposed. Counselor Milne?
Nay.
Counselor Milne is opposed. Counselor, so ever?
In favor?
Counselor, so ever, is in favor. Counselor Bordenio?
In favor?
Counselor Bordenio is in favor. Counselor Robinson? Counselor Robinson is opposed. Counselor Hutchinson has left. That motion lost fifty-four to eighteen.
I'm operating to it. Counsel Burley?
I'd just like to take this time to congratulate the new clerk on that new form on the screen. It's just amazing. It's a great piece of information to have. Thank you very much for doing that.
Okay, so we are back now. We're dealing with the main motion, which is to receive the letter. So I'm gathering we don't need to have any further discussion. So all those in favor? Any opposed? That is carried. Thank you. All right. So we are ready to deal with item six. So I need a motion to take us into closed session. Deal with personal matters about an identifiable individual. So mover moved by Counselor Keveney, seconded by Counselor or Deputy Warden, excuse me, McQueen. So we'll take a second to. Yes. Oh, I need to call all, so I need to say, oh, you have. Counselor, so ever?
In reviewing the material, I have concerns that I would be uncomfortable going into closed session to discuss this matter. I believe it should be discussed in open.
Through you, Mr. Warden, with regard to the committee report, it was staff's determination that we wanted to be able to have a fulsome discussion about the compensation matter enclosed. However, the I think that the resolution that's on the report is very transparent and that will come back out in open session.
Okay, so unless there's further comment there, I'm going to call the question on the motion to go into closed session. All those in favor? I was looking for you. Any opposed? That's carried. So we'll take a second to go into closed. Okay, so we are back in open session. We're just opening the doors to make sure anyone who's out there might want to come in can come in. So it's now three twenty-four PM. We're back in open session. And I declare that we discussed only the items or item indicated in the agenda. Counsel, I'm going to be looking for a mover and seconder for a motion, and I'll read the motion and then ask for a mover and seconder. Sorry. We'll just wait a second for people to get situated. We're good. Okay, we have quorum. All right, so we're back in open session. The motion that I'm looking to have entertained is that the compensation for the positions of Director, Deputy CAO, and CAO be adjusted to reflect a forty-hour work week. And secondly, that the unbudgeted expense of $156,000 for 2022 be funded from COVID-safe restarting funding. We all clear about that? So moved by Counsel Robinson, seconded by Counsel Columbus. Is there any discussion or debate? Then I will call the question. All those in favor? Is there anyone opposed? That is carried. Thank you very much. We're getting near the end, folks. Thank you for your patience. We're on to item number seven now. Other business, seven A is nomination for 2022-24 AMO's Board of Directors. And there is a proposed nomination there. Madam CAO, did you want to speak to that? Who's going to speak to this?
No, we don't have. Should they wish to?
So there is no requirement, just if we wish to have someone nominated? Okay. So is there anyone wishing to have their name put forward? Okay, then that was quick. Oh, Counsel McQueen, go ahead.
Yes, I am seeking to be renominated to the County Caucus Board of AMO. I have served on there since 2015, and I think the the circumstances of the new government and things that happened there. So I'd like to continue on that work for Gray County and County Caucus, if somebody would care to nominate me.
Okay. Moved by Counsel Board Ignan that Deputy Warden McQueen be nominated to the Association of Municipalities of Ontario Board of Directors for the term 2022 to 2024. I need a seconder. And I do not have a seconder, so the motion fails. It does not even, oh, Counselor, so ever. Seconded by Counselor, so ever. So now we have a proper motion on the floor. Is there any debate? Any comments? Then I will call the question. All those in favor? And all those opposed? That fails.
Can I have a recorded vote on that, Mr. Warden? I can't see who voted, so.
No worries. Yeah, we can do that. So Madam Clerk?
Counsel McQueen?
Support.
Counsel McQueen is in favor. Sorry, I will note that Counselors Mackey, Gamble, Burley, Carlton have left. Counsel McQueen supports. Counsel Desai is absent. Counsel Patterson? Counsel Patterson is opposed. Warden Hicks?
Nay.
Warden Hicks is opposed. Counsel Columbus? Counsel Columbus is opposed. Counsel Keveney?
In favor. Sorry.
Keveney is in favor. Counselor Thomas? Counselor Thomas is opposed. Counsel O'Leary? Counsel O'Leary is opposed. Counsel Woodbury? Counsel Woodbury is opposed. Counsel Milne?
Nay.
Counsel Milne is opposed. Counselor, so ever? Counselor, so ever, is in favor. Counsel Bordenio?
In favor.
Counsel Bordenio is in favor. Counsel Robinson? Counsel Robinson is in favor. And Counsel Hutchinson has left. That motion has lost thirty-four to twenty-nine.
Okay. So we are now on to item number eight. Notices of motion. Are there any notices of motion? Seeing none, I need a mover to adjourn. Moved by Counsel Milne, seconded by Counsel Robinson. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? That is carried. Thank you very much, folks. It was a long one today. Have a good day, everyone online.
Bye.